I ask once more, is there anybody here from the Church of God Assembly to bring the invocation? If not, then we will call this meeting to order now at seven. Hi, you're not here to bring our invocation this evening, are you?
That's correct.
Are you? I'll call the meeting to order now at seven o'clock and ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take, we will call peace.
Mayor Hammond.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Mike Condon. Chad Fuller. Bob Porter.
Here.
Ms. Lyle.
Here.
Jacob Horford.
Here.
We are missing a couple people, Chad's fighting the fire, I'm sure you all heard all the sirens going on. And Mike has illness in his family, but we still have a quorum, so we will move ahead to approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the bills as of now.
Agenda. There you go.
Second.
We have a motion from Misty, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now we are looking at the council meeting minutes of June 6th and looking for approval of opposed.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the June 6, 2024 meeting. Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any pre-approved reports? I think we do, the Perry Pride Award for May and June, and Jacob, that's you.
Yeah, I'll start off. So, my district is, I don't know the streets that well, but it's essentially on the south side of town near Bath Road. A new subdivision and the older subdivision there from Bath to...
Periochs.
Periochs. So I actually nominated 321 Oakwood, which is Jeff and Vicky Smith. They are not here tonight to receive it, but they can come to City Hall, I believe, to pick up the award. There's a couple, I would say honorable mentions, their neighbor, 317 Oakwood, and then two other neighbors, 605 Garden Lane and 607 Garden Lane. All four were really nice yards and I went with 321, so good job Jeff and Vicky. My next award, they are present, is for Cafe Sports. For the Perry Pride Award, we nominated a, we isn't me, I guess, picked a business that we felt put their best fit face forward. Cafe Sports, I'll bring you guys up, I guess. I just want to say, I think it's awesome that you guys invested into the exterior side of the business. Now Jake.
Nice to meet you.
Brandon.
Brandon, nice to meet you. We really appreciate that, I think coming into town, it looks awesome, and I thought that if I have a spot to pick, I'm gonna pick you guys, so here's your award, and I really appreciate the investment and, you know, how it looks out there, it looks really, really good.
If you'll stay right there, Megan's gonna take your picture.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
Awesome, guys, thank you.
You're welcome. Very nice, thank you Jacob.
Yep. Okay, we're gonna also do the June awards for the Perry Pride. I happen to have the east side of town, if you will, and south of the tracks, and this year's winners are Jennifer and Jamie Bunker. I believe they are here at 2:10 East Oak. Once again, very nice looking out front, love the landscape lights you've done down the sidewalk, and it just brings a nice touch to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and if you'd like Megan to take your picture there too, so just give her your best side and a nice...
I gotta turn around then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
And for putting your best face forward, we have another one of the local establishments in Charlie's Bar and Grill that are receiving that award. And it is really nice to see the new addition that you now have open, I believe, and functional, the, I don't know if you call it the alley annex or what the title is that you're calling it, but I think that's now been open a couple nights for music and things, so that's outstanding.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on then to public comments, is there anyone here who would like to step forward and make any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move then into communications, Shirley.
Um, we don't really have any communications, other than the park meeting is, or the park event is July 17th from 6 to 8 here at City Hall.
Yes, okay, very good.
I think we have one more meeting, no, no we don't, the next meeting's the 18th of July, so there will be flyers upstairs and we will post them on the website, and that would be it.
Very good. The next is reports, and I'll give the mayor reports first. I do want to let council know that we've had not much at all in the way of inquiries in regard to our parcel that we have for sale in South F52, that is for sale, we're asking $7,000, it's about a half an acre, and we got a new sign on it, a bigger sign than the little miniscule one that was there before. And we did post an ad in the Owasso Argus paper, just to try to bring some attention to that. But since we didn't have much, I did call and talked to Crowe Real Estate, who does land auctions, and spoke to them, the gentleman I spoke to, his name is Troy. He explained to me that if we did go with an auction on that parcel, that the seller pays all the advance costs upfront in regard to advertising, and it would be a minimum of $500. The buyer pays 10% buyer premium, so we would not be paying a commission or a buyer premium, that is paid by the buyer themselves. He did say that he's concerned that because it's most likely not buildable for residential use, that it won't sell. He thinks that at this point in time, he suggests just putting the bigger sign on the property, seeing if that brings us anything, he suggested waiting another month, and if we don't get anything, to call him and we'll talk again. So, that was really all he had to suggest, but that's not anything that we have already talked among ourselves about, so. The other thing I did want to bring to your attention is the conversation that Megan and, would you put one of these around? The conversation that Megan and Shirley and Kevin, the EPW superintendent, and I had with Lion Bear Ventures, that's the grant writers who are affiliated with the SEP in Owasso. We had what they call an intake meeting, it was a Zoom meeting, and then they did, she did, Shiloh is her name, respond today with this email follow-up, with a lot of information about what she thought might be available to us. So I'd like you to just hang on to this, read it when you have time, and my thoughts, and certainly open for council discussion and decision, but my thought would be, based on what she has said here, that we need to have a grant committee, and that it should probably include a council member, the city department head of whatever project we're gonna go after, so for one project, it might be the DPW, for another project, it might be Megan for Parks, you know, so it might change. If there's a committee such as Parks, there should be someone from there, perhaps a member of the planning commission would be a good idea to be on that committee, and an at-large city resident, or two maybe even. Mayor usually sits ad hoc to those committees, so certainly we could do that as well. But give that some thought too, and see what you think, read that information, and we'll talk about it again. And I think that is all of that. Moving on then, we have presentation and approval of the bills. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped committee reports, do we have committee reports? Larry, you have one?
No, I've got a couple items on the agenda that the committee is bringing forward for potential ordinance amendments.
Since Chad's not here, Megan, do we have any report from Parks? None? Okay. Okay, then we will move on to presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and pending to be authorized. Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Jacob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Under old business, we do have something that we talked about last week and asked for more information. The Masonic Lodge has requested that they discontinue the trash service and thus be able to discontinue having to pay that. And Shirley has relayed to them what the additional information was that we needed, and I'm gonna let her let you know.
And so they did provide a letter, which I included in your packet, if everybody read it, but they did also talk to Cafe Too Bad, they did say, but Erin did say that yes, they could use the dumpsters. So at this point, we looked up, looked at the ordinance, and the ordinance says that it's up to the DPW to decide. So we, if you, I just, the motion says that if you are approving this, just to basically let Kevin make that decision if they can discontinue the trash, so.
Okay.
Any comments, discussion? Okay, so we will turn this over to EPW superintendent.
Yep.
I move that we forward this on the DPW supervisor Kevin Tower to make the final decision.
Second.
We have a motion from Jacob, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Into new business, we do have a volunteer to serve on the planning commission, Mike Reader, who's a carpenter, and he has agreed, based on his conversation with Larry Lambert, and then another conversation with me to serve on the planning commission. And so if you have any questions for him, he's here, right there in the front row. Does anybody have any questions for Mike?
Welcome. Thank you, Eric, right up here. That's where he started, the life's hard. That's true, Bob.
Then I will appoint Mike Reader to the planning commission for a term to expire January 1st, 2025, looking for council approval.
I move that we approve Larry's appointment of Mike Reader, planning commission, for a term to expire January 1st, 2025.
Is that you, Jake?
Yeah.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Jake. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving to the next item of business under new business, it's the time for the Treasurer's Fourth Quarter Budget Amendment, and Megan is here to make that presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Stay right there, and you can take a picture while Shirley swears in Mike. Sorry, I forgot.
All right. All right, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Oh, America.
But I'm American.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Charter.
And.
And.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
Of the City of Perry.
Of the City of Perry.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the management. According to the best of my knowledge.
According to the best of my...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm gonna be silent right there, and I will make you come back in.
Hey, you guys, what's going on?
Thank you, thank you, thank you Shirley, sorry I forgot that. Okay, now we can move into the Treasurer's Fourth Quarter Budget Amendment.
So you all had a copy of the fourth quarter budget as of June 17th in your packets. We just went over third quarter budget amendments at the last meeting, so not a lot has changed since then, so I didn't do a big formal write-up for you. The State of Michigan does require though that any amendments you're gonna make have to happen before the close of the fiscal year, so we can't look at the budget at the July meeting, like, oh, we should have, so that's why I'm here with you today. Everything, in my opinion, looks spot-on, actually leaning more toward conservative, we've spent less than we had projected for many projects. There are also quite a few projects in Mindlow right now, things that have started that the bills haven't come in for yet, like the First Street project, I have an 86,000 budget for a road project this year. The estimate that you guys approved a few months back, I think was in like the high 60s, low 70s range. They started pulling wire for the security system upgrades upstairs, but a lot of other commitments still on hold. Auditors will be in the building in the middle of August, so I can still post the date back invoices to this fiscal year we're in now for another month and a half or so, but once they start completely items out, we might have to start looking at, okay, we didn't spend the money this year, we're gonna have to make budgeted amendments next year because these expenses are gonna just cross periods, and after so much time, I can't backdate them to prior to June 30. But the one thing I do have in front of you today is, as you know, we've budgeted for a full-time officer for quite some, probably two, maybe going ahead three years now, a position that we've budgeted for but have not filled. So, knowing that, Kyle and I were having a discussion, there's a couple, we have budgeted also next year for just a new police cruiser. We have spent more than what was budgeted on police cruiser repairs this year, so we budgeted to spend $8,000 to repair the cruisers, and we're over $10,000 this year. So the money that we're putting aside every year, the rent to motor pool from the police fund, we've exceeded how much we put in there this year almost, that was supposed to be money to save for next year's cruiser. So Kyle and I discussed it, and we think it's a good idea to take some of the salary savings between salaries and insurance funds we're not spending, and make that an investment in the motor pool for a total of $50,000. That will just allow Kyle to start shopping for a cruiser right away, rather than waiting to have to wait, excuse me, wait until the end of the next fiscal year, because quarterly transfers, obviously they are the need, quarterly. So, you know, we may have budgeted $65,000 for a car next year, but those funds wouldn't be available until the end of fiscal year. So by doing a transfer, an early transfer now, putting in excess to a motor pool, it'll allow us to shop around sooner, and hopefully get a car out of rotation that's just costly.
I did ask Kyle to look into the lemon law for that cruiser, because we've just put so much money into it, so he's gonna look into that, he's on vacation this week, but we'll see what he finds out.
So to date, I think the, let's see, page 33. Budget for the police department. We budgeted $540,000 as of, as of the 17th, we spent $435,000. There will be a few more expenses that come in as the year rounds out, but we're still looking at probably close to $80,000 on the budget. So my suggestion would be to take 50 of that to a motor pool, support the cruiser.
Council, any questions for Megan, any discussions, time, Mike?
Thank you. Scoot it out?
Yes.
Keep it through the track?
We're just doing the fourth quarter budget amendment.
I move that we approve fourth quarter budget, various amendments as designed by the Treasurer.
We have a motion from Jacob, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shirley's going to share information about this next item, which is a police department request for new, what do we call them?
Equipment upgrade.
You go ahead.
So Kyle has left these items with me. And they're looking to upgrade, this is their...
The new one?
Yeah, the new one, so they wear two in the front, two in the back, so they were... Four of those.
That's the one they currently wear.
That's the one they currently, they're wearing. This is the one that they would like to upgrade to.
It's much lighter.
They were two of those.
This is one that has actually taken 12 rounds of ammo, and it is still in there, yes.
Still is there.
That's what they say.
Sell fields.
So he says that this weighs 10 pounds, those weigh 3.3 pounds. The bullet fragments are captured inside, reducing the chance of injuring the officer after impact, and fit core plates, fit core current plate, oh, that's a current plate carrier, I guess, that's who carries them, and they will take multi-hit rifle capacity each, so it'll take more than one. So that is what...
There's a shelf life, that means I assume that we're at our, there's a shelf life, you know, they're only good for so long.
Oh, I think that they are only good for so long, but I don't know for sure.
I'll tell you that when I die.
So it was making five years.
Yeah, so we're probably at it, I would assume.
2018, this is one from 2000, yeah.
I did hear Megan pass on some information about the ones they use right now, which are the heavier sticker ones, that they, and correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't Kyle say that those deflect the bullet? Where the one, the ones they wanna get absorb the bullet?
So you don't, you never know where will it look like? So that is the ask.
So you do have the quote from Protek in front of you?
The 4550.
I'm going to approve purchase for rifle plate upgrade for the police vest in the Mount Dixie, $4,550.
We have a motion from Misty, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you Shirley. Okay, last week we did hear from Commissioner Emery and Larry Johnson, the head of, the director of the Shawassee County Health Department, about the county plans for solid waste recycling and so forth. Based on the information that we received last week, we now have put back into our agenda discussion and possible resolution to put recycling on the ballot in November. So, any discussion in regard to that?
Didn't it say it's gonna be mandatory by a certain date?
Yes, but it said like 20 years from now, like 20...
2040 or something?
Isn't that far, I didn't think it was that far.
It was so...
2032, they were supposed to have like the...
All the centers of them.
Right, or something like that.
They have to have their plan in place sooner, but to actually put it into effect, I think it was 2038, maybe here something, but it was a...
I mean, we're just gonna have a town hall, and all the council will talk about it before it goes in the ballot.
No, this is, this is, yeah, this is the proposal right here that would go in the ballot, it's the bottom of the resolution.
Oh, okay.
The attorney assisted Shirley in drafting this resolution. Megan and Shirley drafted this resolution, but this resolution would approve it to be placed on the ballot. It must then go in November ballot for residents to approve this, because it's not a yes, we do, no, we don't.
Yeah.
Everybody has to do it, or if it doesn't pass, then obviously nobody does it.
I don't see an issue with that, and someone vote on it?
That's all this is, is a resolution asking. If there isn't any other discussion, then I'm looking for...
I move that we approve the following resolution. Everything that's written there. I gotta read it, read the whole thing.
You have to read it.
Okay, here we go.
It's hard to show you like, welcome aboard.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve the following resolution, whereas the City of Perry does not currently offer recycling service to city residents, whereas Perry City Council believes offering recycling to city properties is a benefit to the residents and, whereas the City of Perry proposes to submit to the city electorate the question of whether to have recycling provided to city properties at the rate of $5.25 per month per utility account and, whereas an election is presently scheduled to be held in the city on November 5th, 2024, now therefore be resolved that the November 5th, 2024 election be deemed to also be a city election and the following proposal be certified to the county clerk and be submitted to the electors in the City of Perry at the November 5th, 2024 election. Proposal for citywide recycling. This proposal requests authorization for the City of Perry to offer recycling to city residents who currently pay utilities to the City of Perry. Recycling service would be provided on a bi-weekly basis, residents would receive a 26-gallon cart, sorry, 96. 96-gallon cart provided by the waste company. The charge for the service would begin at $5.25 per unit per month and be added to the utility bill, that's $5.25. If authorized by voter approval, recycling service would begin in January 2025. Property owners, residents may not opt out of the service. Proposal fails, no recycling will be offered. Shall the City of Perry offer recycling to city properties billed to the current utility bill in the amount of $5.25 per utility account per month, with cost increases not to exceed a 10% annual increase?
We have a motion by Misty, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the possible approval of the first reading of ordinance amendment 394-1080.02, separation, bundling, and packaging. We did have this first reading last week, or last meeting.
Last meeting, and there were some requests and concerns about some of the verbiage that we had, so I'll go ahead through this and make sure everybody's okay with what we now have in front of us. I move that ordinance amendment 394-1080.02, separation, bundling, and packaging, which reads as follows, be placed on the July 18th, 2024 agenda for adoption. The City of Perry ordains, the City of Perry ordinance 1080.02, separation, bundling, and packaging is hereby amended in its entirety and replaced with the following, .1, 1080... Point one, 1080.02 separation, bundling, and packaging. Point two, yard waste, leaves, grass clippings, organic and biodegradable vegetation may be dropped off by city residents in the appropriate designated area at the Department of Public Works or DPW lot during normal DPW business hours. Point three, yard waste shall be separated and segregated from all other forms of refuse. Yard waste consists of leaves, grass, clippings, sticks, and garden materials. Pet and animal waste is deemed hazardous and may not be dropped off nor may be collected by the DPW personnel. Point four, if the residents choose to have their yard waste picked up by the DPW personnel, it must be in yard waste bags, with each bag weighing no more than 35 pounds at time of collection. If a bag exceeds 35 pounds or is too decomposed from being left out in the weather, it will be tagged and left for the residents to handle. All roots and dirt must be set aside, or excuse me, set out in yard waste bags not exceeding 35 pounds. By a detailed schedule for brush yard waste collection and yard waste rules and regulations are set forth by the superintendent of DPW, published annually and available at the city of Perry website.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. The next item is also related to ordinance changes. This is regarding a zoning amendment. So you might want to pay attention to this one, because this is a zoning thing. Go ahead, Larry.
Okay. In reality, this one, we had our first reading up last time. And if you recall, we were primarily proposing some changes that previously had read as zoning administrator for all of the points set in place prior to our adoption with ordinance enforcement officer. And therefore, those are proposed changes. Any comments, questions at this point? I move that zoning ordinance amendment 395, Chapter 17, Section 17.01, Administration Enforcement, Section 17.02, zoning administrator slash OEO duties and zoning compliance program, Section 17.07, zoning compliance program. What was read at the June 8th, or excuse me, June 6th, 2024 regular meeting be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion from Larry, seconded by Jacob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And we have another regarding a zoning amendment.
This one is up for a first reading. And just a little background, most of this ordinance is already in place and on the books in our zoning ordinance. However, in one of our ordinance committee meetings, there was some questions about that it did not include specifically talking about utility trailers. It did not identify that we wanted to make certain that the, any storage of recreational utility vehicles was owned by party, either owning the property or renting the property. Are the two biggest changes that are in place here are being proposed in the equipment, I should say.
I have a couple of questions. It says, if this is the original draft that I was given here, is it now three feet? You want to change it to five?
Right. There's two, there's, well, it's confusing, Bob, because in there, at one point, it talks about five feet already. And there was another one, question was, should it be five feet universally? Because the, in the first section, it does say five feet.
From any dwelling unit? And then what, is that the house, the residence or occupied or unhackable dwelling? Is that a versus Florida line out or any, like a garage or anything like that?
I think we, dwelling is where someone stayed. I can envision it to be.
I try. Should be, I was making sure. Yeah, I just didn't see the reading for three feet or five feet. Then there's, is there a limit already in there to two? Because I know you're having that, I read two in the new one, I think. If I ever read it correctly.
Yes.
If I'm wrong.
It is two, and that number hasn't, we're not proposing any change in that number.
Okay. Is there, I know we had this already in the books, is there any, has there been an issue or is it a problem? Was it just that little clarification for the few?
Actually, there was a need for clarification. Ron had to deal with the five versus three feet. He made an interpretation for time to deal with that issue. But we said, it's an ordinance committee, let's get it clarified, cleaned up, and just make it five feet universally. And the same issue came up previously. It talked about recreational vehicles. And you raised the question of what about utility trailers and things like that? So is it, we're going to have utility trailers to just be more clear in the ordinance?
And it's only for dwellings, quote unquote. My smart, my two feet are so to my garage. That's why I was making sure that it's crammed two feet that way. I do have one other question. Can't occupy it for more than seven days in a 30-day period. My question to that is, I guess there's one certain way to go around it. One, what if something catastrophic happens to your house? You can't afford a hotel or whatever, you want to stay there. You have an RV, you can stay there. Two, what if you have relatives of some sort come stay with you for the summer? And then you don't have room in your house, but you have an RV?
Can I go into that? We have a temporary stay zoning permit.
Okay.
So that would cover that.
Just because I know there's one down the street from me, I don't think it's a permit.
Okay, he did get a permit. He rented it and he did put his house.
Because every year, it's like they got that in the primary area. I don't like it where they put it, but nothing to deal with me.
Well, I don't know which way down the road from you, but.
It's on, I just want to, it's on, I never remember the one. Watkins, just north of the school. On this side of the road.
By ICA.
No. Watkins run.
Watkins runs north.
North and south.
Oh, Watkins.
You got the school, next one, you got Horace, I mean, Madison and Watkins.
I can never.
Rollins, Rollins is the one that runs on the north side of the school.
Yeah, they're just north of that, they're like two or three hours to them.
Keene Street.
No, it's between those two. It's on Watkins, between Keene and Rollins.
Oh, I see.
It doesn't bother me, yeah, just curious, because it's like, oh, you know. Maybe they don't want them in their house.
Yeah, I think a couple of those.
Okay. We do have, we have a way to make provisions for that.
And they pay for it.
I have a question myself. Adding the utility trailers in our current ordinance only two, you know, I don't want to get carried away, but I can imagine one utility trailer alone. I mean, I had one for the longest time. With one utility trailer, I mean, if someone has a side by side, they probably have a lot too. It seems like two is a small amount of numbers. Once you start including trailers too. Any thought on that? I don't want to get carried away with having something that's enforceable when you start to count trailers, it kind of, you know.
Would that fall under our business? Do you really have a business ordinance for the trailer part?
It's really focused on residential.
No, I meant, because you can't have a business out of your residence. And if they have a trailer, it's not necessarily connected by the, they have the utility trailer.
Just because they park a utility trailer, that doesn't mean.
Doesn't mean they're running a business out of their home.
Is that what you're saying?
No.
Because you can bring.
No, what I'm saying is, like, Jake's probably going to get crazy, but they may have a utility trailer, but then they also have a boat and a camper or something.
Yeah. Once you start doing that, I mean, most people that have a camper, they probably have something with it. And people that have that stuff, they typically have a trailer and something like that.
It's just, and there is a limit. I mean, you have, I have to screw the limit. So I have a canoe hanging on the fence, and then I have a boat on the trailer. So, you know, technically, with this, it would be in violation. I love canoe counts as a recreational vehicle. It's not a trailer.
At a particular point, I guess we get.
Right?
I just think two is, I think two is too small if you're starting to include trailers too. That's just my opinion. That was the only thing I came up reading, is everything going so good to me.
We can do the same thing. We can take it back to the ordinance committee and bring it back next time.
And just look at this little thing.
In terms of the number, if we want to specify, right now, it's specified if you have a closed building. Now, things we could consider, and I'm not going to make a decision here relative to overall the ordinance committee, if you will, but we could look and say that you can't have any more than two unless they're outside your backyard or something.
Something like that.
And I would ask Ron too. I mean, he's the one seeing these instances, getting his input. Maybe the scenario I'm drumming up in my head is not as.
Doesn't exist.
Yeah.
It isn't a problem.
But I'm just thinking about, again, myself, and I can see two being a very small number, very quickly.
Ron comes to all that ordinance committee meetings, as always.
The only other thing to think about, just, we have a lot of older lots here. And a lot of them are built, you know, their houses are shifted to the one side for their driveway and stuff. So that other side may not have enough space to, you know, that's where, the only place they can put it, but they may not have five feet from the house. So just, there should be a way to appeal it or, you know, get.
Deal with special cases.
Yes.
I thought there was something in there that says something that's very bothering me. I thought.
I move that we table this ordinance amendment first reading or further work by ordinance committee, and if we're going to bring it back to the next council meeting.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion Larry just made, seconded by Jacob, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We will bring that back. So Larry, you'll schedule an ordinance meeting?
I'll get some granted and get it out to everyone in the public voting meeting.
Thank you.
You know, I don't want to keep talking about it, but just thinking, you know, you could also say there are clerch issues, a number of trailers in recreation.
And I think two should, and we'll talk about this in the ordinance meeting, but the size of the lot, the how they can be stored, what they're, are they parked in the middle of the front yard? Or are they parked in a driveway? You know, that needs to be addressed as well.
Yeah, the front yard is.
Yes.
Well, I don't think you're supposed to park in your grass.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, some people, they just put gravel down to see their.
Right.
Where there's a will, there's a way. It doesn't mean it's right, but.
All righty, then, if we're finished with that, are we all done? Any more discussion? Moving on then to number nine, possible approval of city's compensation policy. There's an amendment to the city's compensation policy. And we were going through this stuff today, and I think I got out of order. There's just a little bit that's been, hey, Chad, did you get the fire out?
Yeah, it was a car accident on the highway.
Oh, a car accident.
Sorry.
No. Thank you for, thank you for all you do there. I appreciate that. I think all of you do have a copy of the city of Perry compensation policy. And this is still drawn. The annual adjustments to the salary and grade structure is where the changes are being suggested. And you'll see strikeouts for what is suggested that we just eliminate. And most of that is related to how raises are given. And striking it eliminates the fact that a raise, a merit raise, if you will, would be given every year, because sometimes we can't afford to give a merit raise every year. So the change would be, if you're looking at the second page of this policy, under annual adjustments to the salary and grade structure, prior to the beginning of each fiscal year, then strike out all the next two and a half lines. And then say, evaluations are reviewed by the department head and or the mayor, and cost of living increase are determined at that time. So it doesn't mean they're automatically going to get one. It doesn't mean it's written in stone. It just says that evaluations have to be done and the cost of living increase is determined at the time that those. Exactly.
Why are, why are we moving away from city council and that verbiage? Because like right now, don't we use the personnel committee to determine those? Or it's brought to our attention, personnel committee has conversation.
Well, it depends on whether you're talking about cost of living or merit raises. This is now only talking about cost of living. We're eliminating anything that says they will get a merit raise, because they may not. There have been some years when we just don't have it in the budget. There are some times when merit raises are given based on additional responsibilities or certifications or, and that type of thing. But as far as based on evaluation, it may not happen. So eliminating the rest of it, it just eliminates any confusion, I think. So I'll give you a few minutes if you, if you need it to read through that, and then we can have further discussion.
Is there a way to put like the verbiage, like if the budget allows or something like that? I just feel bad taking out the merit pay. I mean, I do like that we have like the certifications that like the 50 cents per hour they get certified, but I see the point, but it's kind of like, I don't know, like a catch-all that budget allows for merit pay, I guess.
Well, I'll book you out. And then how would we define how it allows it? Right. I mean, then you have to say, if the budget has this much excess, and what is that percentage, and how would that be determined?
Just a little further, I think the whole line that looks like in the plan we did is individual merit pay increases may be limited by the city's ability to pay at a particular year.
Yes.
Pretty much.
And then.
And that covers.
Yes. And that is, that is a new line. So if you get past all the strikeouts, then that line is new. And then if you flip the page over, where it says certification, this is also new. Any new certification received by an employee will result in a 50 cent per hour increase in pay starting July 1st of the next budget year. The certification must apply directly to the employee's job function. The course must be approved by the department head. The employee must supply proof of certification. And the mayor must approve the pay increase upon evidence the certification was achieved. So that's a new paragraph.
Does the mayor currently have the authority to approve pay increases?
Based on the certification by this definition.
It was.
We have done that, but it was never defined in this policy. So that's why we're adding the paragraph, so that it's not just, oh, this is the way it's always been done. It's actually defined. But that's the only time that the mayor would approve that.
Yeah.
Because they approve the, make sure the certification applies to the job and so forth.
I'm only thinking, like, Sue, I know you do a lot, and if you're a good amount of time with future mayors, I'm just wondering if they're going to be as active or involved. It's like right now, I keep going back to personnel committee, but I just think, you know, is that something where we should leave it in council or personnel committee where there's multiple people that are consistently meeting, you know? I think in the past, we've had some figurehead mayors where they're here as frequently and things like that. Just talking about, you know, future, right? Just my thought.
The cert, are you talking about the certification paragraph? Are you talking? The certi, are you talking about the certification paragraph or are you talking about?
Uh, the last paragraph says, uh, the mayor must approve the pay increase upon evidence the certification was achieved.
And that, that's not a terribly time consuming thing.
I know, but yeah.
I think, what do you require, 20 hours a week? Isn't it considered like a 20 hour a week job?
Mine?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not sure. I never saw anything that said how many hours.
I was, I was thinking in my head, it was kind of like about a 20 hour a week thing.
Yeah, I'm almost always here 20 hours a week plus. But I hear what Jake's saying.
Get them just in conversation.
There have been other mayors who had daytime jobs who only came in when they could, either before going to work or after getting out of work. And I mean, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, just bring.
But that, that's not a terribly time consuming.
I don't see.
Thing. That's pretty straightforward.
One of the other issues that may be an issue, Jacob, but I, I, I don't see it as an issue with the certification perfect myself.
The only thing I would see or want to add or something is it has to go to the department head. He has to approve the course, but I think he, the department head, he or she should then present it to the mayor. This was for the raise.
And that's pretty much how that has happened, but.
It's not, it's.
It's not spelled out in.
It's not quite clear enough, at least when I'm reading it.
But you have to provide evidence that the course was achieved.
Correct, but it just.
The department head has to approve the course to begin with.
Right, but then it doesn't say that he has to present the proof. I don't know, just maybe I'm reading into it or not reading into it.
Well, how about if you say the mayor must approve the pay increase, well, upon evidence of.
You just have, some of the department head can recommend or.
Oh, no, they, no.
You know, something like.
So like DPW, they go to training, they'll get a certificate.
Correct.
Here's mine. Here's her certificate.
They should go to the department head and the department go to the mayor and say, this person, Joe Blow, did the course. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, you're saying you want the department head to, I, I would just think that's the way it would work.
Right, but it's not, it's not quite clear, but I don't know if it's, I'm just, I try to.
I think they're going to do it too much. I mean, that's what's going to happen. The department head's going to tell the mayor and the mayor's going to handle it.
They should, but I deal with personnel all day, every day, and sometimes they want.
Just take out the employee.
Something, you know.
The course must be approved by the department head and proof of certification presented to the mayor. I mean, just tweak it that the department head is the one.
If I'm overthinking, it's fine. I have no issue with it, but that's the only thing I saw.
I can see.
I liked what Misty said.
Like, cause I mean, it's kind of going through two people instead of just the department head should be the one, hey, all my guys got certified in this. Okay, they've talked to Sue about it, instead of each employee going to the mayor, especially if it's an department of people like the DPW. I mean, I, I do think that makes more sense with the department. It'd be the conversation piece there. I think that makes.
And it, and that's how it has happened?
Yeah.
That's how it has happened, but it, I, I think if I'm understanding Misty correct, if this last certification paragraph says, the course must be approved by the department head and proof of certification.
Presented to the.
Presented to the mayor.
I agree. So.
To approve the pay increase.
I, I think it'd be easier to have the mayor just handle that than try to get a committee together. Cause the mayor's going to be in the building multiple days a week and trying to get a committee together. Hopefully for something like that and pay them to get together.
But to try to answer what Jacob's addressing, if I'm, if I'm hearing you, and I think I am, when there is a question of whether an employee has achieved a merit raise, if they've taken on new responsibilities, if they, they're doing a new, something they hadn't done before. They're responsible for something they hadn't been responsible for, that merit raise is not the mayor, that's the personnel.
So I'm not, I'm not confused on that. Like, uh, Kevin Tyler perceived his, he passed a certification for that. And that likes to put personnel and then we presented it to council and they approved that. That's what we're talking about here.
And the reason I took it to personnel.
Yeah.
Was because this is a new paragraph.
Right.
I couldn't find anywhere.
But now we're taking it to the mayor. That, that was my point that I brought up was to bring it to the mayor. There, if, let's say Jacob Puffer wanted to be mayor next year and I would have put in, Jacob Puffer was a full-time job. There's not a requirement for hourly currently. So I'm just saying what we did worked efficiently. It worked fine. Moving forward though, if there's not as Sue Hammond, that's here 20 hours a week or four hours a week or one hour a week. I'm just saying there's no, we're clarifying commitments and things right now and I'm just saying that's another opening, you know? So it's just a point, but I could get completely wrong and I may be.
Again, I'll just say for clarification, this paragraph of certification is a new paragraph. In the past, the way the raise for certification always happened was Joe Blow got his certification. Let's give him a 50 cent, an hour raise, and that happened in the next budget year. But there wasn't anything in writing that defined how that happened and who did it.
Right.
So we've just put into writing how that has always happened. And if council is not happy with it happening that way.
Yeah.
Then now's the time to change it, but this is just defining how it's happened as far back as Shirley can.
So you're saying the mayor's always in terms of your certification? Oh, okay.
And it's just, excuse me, the department head has to put it in the budget. It doesn't, isn't affected till the next fiscal year.
Right.
So that person has to put it in their budgets. So it's already covered. If it was an apartment head, then that definitely would have, should go to personnel committee and then to council. Since it's an employee, they're writing a file that's like, they have to put it in their budget. I mean, this is probably those wage increases justified through their budgets.
So if we did, if I did a training, say I work for, in DPW, did a training, get a certificate and I would be getting the 50 cent an hour raise. Say I did that in August of this year, okay, which is the next budget, right? But I wouldn't get the raise until the next July in 2020. Bye.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
But the, the part on the second page where we're talking about taking out the descriptions of adjustments beyond the cost of living and so forth and so on, that, that type of merit raise has always gone to the personnel committee for a recommendation and that comes to council for a. That is not just a mayor decision. That's never been, that's always gone to the personnel committee. Or if there wasn't a personnel committee, it's always gone to council for final approval. And that, that would still be the case. There's nothing in here that says it wouldn't happen that way. But this is for discussion and this is for council to say how they want it to be worded.
Certainly a function, but it's not terribly time consuming function in my opinion for the, the mayor to be the focal point for the decision for us. The case of the certification.
It's going to be harder to get, you know, four or five people together than one.
Well, it sounds like that's the way it's always been. It's just not, it's not been verbiage for it. But we're taking out the merit pay that would actually, that's what used to go to the student council. I said student council, sorry, I'm not in school.
Removing the council portion.
Right, okay. And putting, correcting on what's always been going on anyway.
But not, not, not removing it so it never comes to council because the merit rate, merit raises will come to council.
The merit raises will always, well, as far as this is concerned, it, they will always. Go to the personnel committee and then come to council. Merit raises are not approved by the mayor. They go to the personnel committee and they make a recommendation to council, council approves or denies.
So would that be that, that one sentence there?
Individual merit pay increases.
Is that somewhere we should put something with the city council down there?
We could certainly do that.
Like individual merit pay increases may be limited by the city, city council's ability to pay in.
No, I could just say that the merit pay increases are determined by personnel committee and with council approval.
That was my, that was what I was getting to originally, you know, cause they went from city council to department head and or mayor. That's where I, that was my first point actually, was what Misty's clarifying. Cause I thought that was, I couldn't wrap my head what the, what the advantage or the, if it's going to go through council anyway, why wouldn't that be stated, you know? Cause I was getting confused. Cause I thought, oh.
Yeah, there's merit and certificate.
Yeah, I would assume they all go through the same channels always, rather than one type of raise being this way and another raise being this way.
I think it's because it's a compensation or certification increase is pretty straightforward. If you're taking the course, if you pass the course, it applies to your job, you get the raise.
Sure.
So, you know, that's pretty straightforward. Plus, we could add verbiage.
Determined by the.
After individual merit pay increases may be limited by the city's ability to pay in any particular year, merit increase evaluations will be reviewed by personnel committee. And stop me if you don't like it, personnel committee with final approval of city council.
That's what we've always done. We've just had the.
It is correct.
And then we, we recommend it and then it goes right to out all of us and then we approve it or deny it.
So I'll just read it again. Merit increase evaluations will be reviewed by the personnel committee and final approval will be given by city council. Will be determined, I guess probably is a better way. Final approval will be determined, sorry.
Merit increase evaluations will be determined by the personnel committee with final approval by the city council.
So with those changes, council, are you comfortable in approving this amendment to the city's invocation, or excuse me, not the, the city's compensation policy? Or do you want it to come back to council again at the next meeting?
I move that we approve the amendment of compensation policy as presented and amended by the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your involvement in that. And now we have another amendment. This is to the city's invocation policy. And this just is trying to clarify that if the clergy that's been invited to come, and there's a schedule, Shirley or the clerk types that up every year based on people who have come in the past from churches in the area. And we send that out just assigning a date to each one, so they have a list, a calendar, if you will, to say, we expect to see you bring the invocation at this date's meeting. And there's, I don't know, maybe eight or nine people on that list now. But as like tonight, that person did not come, so I just moved ahead and started the meeting. In the past, I had asked if anybody in the room wanted to do the invocation or sometimes I gave it myself. But that was discussed quite a bit at the meetings that we have between department heads. And there was kind of an awkward time at one of the meetings when it just, it was awkward that someone stepped up and gave the invocation. So I would like to propose that based on our invocation policy that we simply change it to indicate that if the clergy invited to give the invocation is not here, that we do not have an invocation.
It's under nine, E, and C.
But that's open for discussion and again, it's up to you guys if you're not comfortable with that. We can discuss.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
I think that's fine.
So looking for that motion.
I move that we approve the amendment of the invocation policy presented by the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Mike, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Motion passes. And now we have possible approval of an amendment to the personnel policy regarding training and conventions. And I think you all have that.
I do have to apologize because you're supposed to be running yellow on your papers and it just didn't happen that way. But we will have a new calendar soon.
We're open for discussion in regard to that, if you all have that in front of you.
It seemed like a big leap from 500 to 2,000.
I agree.
Yeah, it hasn't been changed in a long time.
Yeah, it's probably.
Okay, Ashley, that's a big step.
It's the same leap we took when we went to what can department heads spend, you know, every time the council made approval. As long as it's already in the budget, the department head can spend up to $2,000 on a piece of equipment.
Oh.
So the same now would apply to education.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So is that limited to 2,000 per?
Department or person?
Yeah, person or department?
Um, I don't, I think it's per request, whoever that ask is for that training.
So like if the money's used up on someone's, someone else's training, then that, the next person that asks, well, the money's already gone, maybe next year. Right, okay.
Is that being budgeted?
Yes, it still has to be already in the budget. So there's a training and seminar line.
I move that we approve the following amendment to personnel policy and training sessions and conventions. Oh, new certification raise for the city of Perry, except for those covered by a master contract, which is negotiated with a recognized union or labor group with the understanding that this policy will be effective June 20th, 2024. See language.
That doesn't, you know, nice to read that.
Let's get that part.
Yeah.
And training sessions and conventions. Employees may be granted time off with pay to attend training sessions, conventions, workshops, and meetings of a nature related to their position on approval of department head. Two, any single expense in excess of $2,000 for attending such, such sessions, conventions, workshops, or meetings must be authorized with the city council. Such authorization must be obtained before attending. Registration fees, three, registration fees, lodging, travel, and meals while in attendance at useful public informational or educational workshops and seminars in-house or outside the city may be approved by the head of each department. Do we include that next one in it? Okay. Oh, new certification raise. Any new certification received by an employee will result in a 50 cent an hour increase in pay starting July 1st of the next budget year. The certification must apply directly to the employee's job function. The course must be approved by the department head. The employee must supply proof of the certification and the mayor must approve the pay increase upon evidence the new certification was achieved.
Can I say one thing? I'm sorry, but we should make that.
We're getting the same as the other one.
So friendly amendment here just to make this language reflect what we just discussed in the previous motion.
Right. Second. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by. We have a motion from Mike, seconded by Misty. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay. In regard to the next item, which is possible approval of amendment to personnel policy regarding health insurance. As Shirley and I were going through the inmate and we're going through this today, we had questions about making different places in that section of the personnel policy match. So we were going, oh, what does that say? Oh, but this says something different. So what I'd like to propose is that we table this and allow us time to go over it again, making sure that all the different locations that talk about the same thing match. So if that's okay with you guys, we'll table that till the meeting of July 18th because we don't have a meeting July 4th. And we'll talk about it then.
Do you want to table that? I, I need to table item 12, possible approval amendment to personnel policy.
Second.
We have a motion from Misty, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. We are now through our agenda and I'm asking if there's any other business that may come in for council at this time. Any other public comment? Anyone that has anything to offer? We do have some agenda items for our next meeting, which is July 18th. Reminding everybody, we are not meeting on the 4th of July. Any other discussions, council members, who want to bring it at this time? Then I leave at 8:12 PM. Our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.